The zoning commission regular.
Recording in progress.
The zoning commission regular meeting is being called to order at seven forty-five P M on April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only, and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting's additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Before we begin, well, we'll do roll call first. Fisher here.
Crew.
Crew.
Here.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Spellman.
Here.
And Engelben.
Here.
Trustees Augustine and Asherall are here in attendance. Swedick is virtual. Inspector Wilson is also here. Before we move on to the approval of the minutes, I just want to announce that we are, the preliminary site plan for Serenity Court is being tabled for tonight. The applicant asked that we table that until our May meeting. So if there's anyone here that was here for the Serenity Court proposal, I apologize, we won't be discussing that at today's meeting. All right, has everyone had the opportunity to review the March fourth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting minutes?
Yes.
Does anyone have any changes that they would like to see made to the minutes? If there are no requested amendments, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from March fourth. Moved by Crew.
Sorry.
Seconded by Marzullo. All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Unanously approved. If there are no objections by the zoning commission, I'd like to skip the old business for now and begin on the new business for the final site plan review for the village of Hinckley Oaks, which was also known as the senior housing project. Do we have a representative from the project?
Good evening, all. Ben Weinerman with Pride One Construction, twenty-two eleven Medina Road, Medina, Ohio, four-four-two-five-six. The plan in front of you tonight compiles all of the feedback we've gotten over the past year-plus and looks very familiar, hopefully, to you all. We've included all the plantings and then some fencing and other buffering and screening that have been discussed in previous meetings. We've complied with all of the seventeen conditions assigned with our approval, and we're here to answer any questions. Appreciate your time this evening.
Where, on your map, when I was looking at your landscaping map, and my eyes are not very good anymore, but I didn't see mounding. Is it designated down here? Or is that, did I miss it?
The mounding that was discussed in previous hearings or meetings was discussed on the south side, south property line, abutting the industrial. And while we do not show mounding on that south property line, there is reasoning behind that. Through the engineering process, it's been brought to our attention that the property to the south of us is draining north onto our property. And through Medina County Engineering Review and Davie's Civil Engineering Design, it's been determined that we need to capture that water in our stormwater system, which we have catch basins behind the buildings on the south property line that capture that water running north from the industrial park onto our property into those catch basins, which gets routed to the detention basin that you see on West one-thirtieth, which will then treat the stormwater and release it at a engineered rate.
So did that, we had already talked about oversizing that as a result of the property to try to control the water flow.
Correct.
Was that oversized further, or was the oversizing that was already done sufficient to capture that additional water coming from the south property?
It's been designed to capture that water running from the south property. Our concern was by putting in mounding on our south property line that we would be damming that water up and creating a more drastic drainage issue for the neighbor to the south. So we've been conscious of that. We've included many plantings, actually more than what was initially approved on the six-ten, two thousand and twenty-one landscape plan, as well as six-foot shadow box privacy fencing on that south property line.
Can you explain shadow box? I don't think that you have a.
It's your typical privacy fence that you would see where, you know, the boards are running horizontal. This will be a decorative vinyl, but there would be, it would not be opaque in any way.
So, one of the conditions of the B Z A, I'm reading item four. It says, along with sufficient mounding, a minimum of a six-foot fence shall be installed along the south side of the property, which is the property line abutting the industrial parkway. I understand your rationale for no mounding, but my question then is, can we increase the size of that fence? Because the B Z A had intended you to have a mound and then a fence, which would have increased the height, primarily because that, the property to the south is an industrial district. So, you know, we're talking about noise pollution, light pollution, and we want to minimize how much your residents are seeing of that potential noise and light pollution.
I appreciate your concern for future residents. It should be noted that when our residents come to visit our community, they will very clearly in broad daylight see the industrial park to the south, and they would be making the conscious decision to be living adjacent to it.
They're seeing one potential, one current use of that property. But that, there are many other industrial uses of that property, and that could change at any time. So it's not just the current use, it's future uses that we have to be concerned about.
Sure. If, if an eight-foot fence would appease the board, then we can do an eight-foot fence. Our goal is not to make this property look as though it's a penitentiary. You know, we want it to be inviting, and I think the higher those fences go, the more it looks like you're either, A, trying to keep people out, or just not as inviting. So, yes, if an eight-foot fence would appease the board, I'm sure we can accommodate it.
And I would imagine that the fence, the six-foot or eight-foot, whatever size it is, is going to be on the south side of your tree. So you're wanting to actually have the fence immediately adjacent to the property line, and then you'll have your trees inside of that to hopefully break up the fence from the perspective of the homeowners.
Yes.
Within the development.
Yes, that was our thought process behind doing so.
I think if we can, I'd like to work our way, since we're already on the south side, I'd like to move to the west and then, and continue on around the property. So if there are any other comments on the west side, or on the south side, excuse me, which is abutting the industrial district. None? Go ahead.
Just curious, now, we say along with sufficient mounding. Now that that is not the case, it no longer complies with the condition that was there. Did they, to go back and get a revision on that?
Do you want to speak? So, item four says, along with sufficient mounding, a minimum of six foot. If they have no mounding, would they need to go back to the B Z A? Or if, or, the word sufficient creates a little bit of a gray area, and therefore, we might be able to work with it outside of going back to B Z A. What's your thought on that?
Well, I would think if there was, as you suggested, an eight-foot fence, you're getting, you know, there may be room for compromise. I don't think you have to go back to the B Z A if your satisfaction is fine.
Anything else? What would you have anticipated the final height of that fence being if there were mounding? Because it, it, it's one of those things, like, you're looking at the mounding, you look at the mounding that the Trails of Redwood did. I mean, that, those are big mounds.
Right.
So, I don't know that.
B Z A didn't specify.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, like, if we're, if we're looking for sufficient mounding and a fence, and they're both required, I think that's kind of what we need to iron out, is, is an additional two-feet fence providing that, that barrier that was originally envisioned.
I, I understand that balance, and I also understand why you might not be able to do mounding there, because you just can't have earth where water needs to penetrate. And the last thing that we want to do is create another water issue. So that your rationale for excluding the mounding, I think, is reasonable, if that's an accurate statement. And we can work through the conditions at the very end. I just kind of want to do a sweeping overview of the different issues that we might have, and then we can work on whether we want to approve, approve with conditions, or reject this plan.
Are there any sort of water flow studies that actually show where the water's going?
This is the drainage study, I can't even have a lecture copy, so I can't handle it. Drainage study submitted to Medina County Engineering, where delineates theory is that.
And, Mr. Wilson, do you have a copy of this? If not, I would suggest giving it to the B Z A.
Delineates the areas that Medina County felt it was our responsibility to manage.
That's sufficient. Thank you.
And those blue arrows you see are the drainage patterns as they stand today.
So from this, it, you might be able to do some mounding on the southwest side, potentially, based upon where water flows behind building ten-eight-and-seven, potentially, but then you'd have a partial mound.
Well, you can see, you can see the topography shown behind those buildings. That is a drainage swale with stormwater basins that aren't shown on this plan in particular, but if you flip the page, it's still hard to see, but there are about a hand, four catch basins capturing that water. And we have to maintain drainage behind our buildings, obviously, for flooding reasons. So, while there might be a thirty or twenty-five-foot buffer from the property line to our building, a good portion of that needs to be a swale. So, any mounding that would happen on that property line would be very minimal in order to be mowable. We can't build a cliff, obviously, on the property line in a five- or ten-foot swatch.
Understand it. Any other comments on that, Mr. Marzullo? Or can we move on to the west side? Yeah. Great. So if you can, it's tough for me to visualize on this, even on the colored image, on the west side, which is the West one-thirtieth border. Why don't I, if it might help the public, if I can display this colored image? Let me see if I can quickly do that. If someone else has any questions, feel free to ask while I pull this up. So there's the majority of the parcel. We're not looking at the, I've, I've have it zoomed in, so we're not seeing the entrance off of Center Road, but the rest of the parcel is shown there. So if we look at the West one-thirtieth side, I can see the right-of-way. Are those, are, do you have a split rail fencing on that side as well? And is it continuing along the whole side? Or, I saw some split rail fence, but I couldn't tell where this fencing elevation for this decorative stained and timbered fence is supposed to be located on the plan.
With the way the pond lays out, our intention was to only do on the south side of our entry drive on West one-thirtieth, you know, a few sections going south, maybe, what would it be? Eight, eighteen to twenty-four feet. And then, you know, it'd be L-shaped at the entry there with the faux gates.
That's approximately, by my measurement, about a hundred to five-hundred-and-seventy feet, give or take there. So you would do about a hundred-and-twenty foot on the south side of the entrance, and then the rest, that would just be, I think, arborvitae's.
Correct, that would be, yes, natural screening.
Okay. And then, I will note that the parking lot appears to have changed. Prior to this submission, I think you had some parking over on the north side.
That's correct.
Of the clubhouse. And you've moved that, that parking to the east side of the existing parking.
That's correct.
Correct. And then, is, are the two squares that we're seeing, is that the clubhouse? Or, I think the top one is the clubhouse and leasing. What's that bottom square, and where's the pool?
They're both clubhouses. You know, it's a combination. There's an open courtyard in the center.
Okay.
More than likely will be a hardscaping of some sort, pavers or something to that effect. Like you said, there'll be leasing in one building, possibly a meeting area, and other amenities in the other building, like fitness, a fitness facility, golf simulator, things of that nature. And it should be noted that the plan that we were approved with at B Z A did not show a pool.
Okay, but there will be a pool, correct?
No, there is no pool in this project, no.
Okay.
No, we have, to the south of those clubhouse buildings, we have some outdoor recreation, like pickleball.
Where the redwood trees are located?
Yes, there are two rectangles, just to the south of that.
Okay.
Further building.
Okay. And then, the signage that you have on that entrance, it looks like it's right on the right-of-way. Mr. Wilson, correct me if I'm wrong, it's got to be ten foot back from the right-of-way, or variance has to be obtained, is that, that's correct? So I want to make sure you note that, because you either have to get a variance, or you have to push that signage back, ten feet away from the, the right-of-way.
I don't have a scale with me, but it is not right on the right-of-way. There's a good chance that it is ten foot back, roughly.
Really?
Yeah, if you flip to the second page, there's a plan and profile view of that entryway.
Okay, so.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, I misspoke.
It's all the way up to the right-of-way, though.
Correct. That is just pavement.
And then the sign is set back from the curb, okay. So, the only comments I have on this side for us to consider are, there, there's, there are no trees, as far as I can tell, between the south clubhouse and the, and the road. So, we might want to look into putting some trees in there to break that up, so that you're not seeing the side of the building that way. The other item is, and this will, this will tie in elsewhere too. Page sixty-eight of the resolution, the states that five shade or ornamental trees for every one-hundred linear feet of lot frontage or fraction, or fraction thereof, not including, sorry, let me go back to page sixty-seven. So this is landscaping along the street frontage. All areas within the required building and parking setback, excluding driveway openings, shall be landscaped. The following minimum plant materials shall be provided and maintained. Five shade or ornamental trees for every one-hundred linear feet of frontage or fraction thereof, not including drive entrances. Each tree at the time of installation shall have a clear trunk height of at least six feet and a minimum caliper of two inches, measured at a height of five feet above the grade. For the purpose of these regulations, a shade or ornamental tree shall be a tree normally growing to a mature height of at least twenty feet and a mature spread of at least fifteen feet. Twenty shrubs for every one-hundred linear feet of front, of lot frontage or fraction thereof, not including drive entrances, are also required. And then grass, ground cover, or other live landscape treatment. And that plantings and screenings along a public street shall not block or interfere with the site distance. So when I look at the, the property abutting the West one-thirtieth street, by my count, I have, I think, nine arborvitae, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, fourteen arborvitae across about a hundred, or, sorry, about a four-hundred-foot span. And that does not seem, and I, I don't even know if an arborvitae's, which you're only initially at four feet, would count as a shade tree, because I don't think an arborvitae at a mature height gets a spread of fifteen feet. And it's also not six feet at the time of planting. So I wanted you to address how you felt that the west boundary, where you've put those plants, is sufficient to meet six B eight A.
Sorry, I'm just reading through this code. I don't see anything in here that says that those trees necessarily need to be planted along the frontage. And I think we've provided plenty of plantings throughout the community. Our goal, again, is not to hide our beautiful community that we're building, it's to enhance it.
But if what you. Well, it says.
Landscaping along front.
Right, it says landscaping along the street frontage. And then it says, all areas within the required building and parking setback shall be landscaped to the following minimum. But that's talking about the street frontage.
Okay. So you'd like to see twenty more trees along that frontage, then?
I, I think we've got to see more of a combination of trees and shrubs, because we also have the twenty shrubs. So we've got to see some sort of additional landscaping there to break up the site of the, you know, the complex from the street. Remember that this is a business district, and so these are the regulations of a business district, because we don't want to see a lot of what's happening in the business district from the roads. So while this is, might look more residential, it's not residential, it's a business.
Okay. We can comply with it, it's not a problem.
And the other thing, and this is just a consideration for you, particularly since this is a senior housing development. You know, we don't know what's going to happen to the parcel that's located to the northwest of your property. It's currently, it went through B Z A as a discount drug mark, but we don't know that it will for sure be that.
Sure.
But I do wonder if it would make sense to have a sidewalk from the West one-thirtieth entrance, and then also from the three-zero-three entrance, heading in that direction. I realize that it's going to terminate into nothing currently, but for planning purposes, it might make sense to put a sidewalk there, because I do not want to see your residents walking out onto the road, particularly if they're handicapped, they have wheelchairs, they have walkers, to get to whatever might be in this other business district. So it's something I think you should consider, it's not much distance for a sidewalk.
Sure, absolutely. Is it hurt? I don't think that's an issue at all. How wide would that sidewalk be?
I would imagine four foot, probably enough for a wheelchair. But that, again, that would be something that you would work through.
Only two wheelchairs going next to each other, so would be like six foot?
There's a balance there. Is there anything else along that west boundary that people had concerns about? All right, we look, and I'll move our map up a little bit as we continue to head north, and now we'll start moving east. The strip behind units one and three, I didn't see any issues with that. That adjoin, that abuts a business district. I think it's nicely landscaped, I had no concerns there. Does anyone else have any concerns on that portion of the parcel? If we continue towards the Center Road entrance, and we look at the Center Road entrance, the west side, which again, abuts a B one district. Excuse me if I misspoke, I said B two, B four for the other one, it's a B one district. I didn't see any issues with that strip either. Are there any concerns with that strip? Nope. So again, the only suggestion that I would have is maybe consider a sidewalk from that street across the, westwardly towards the business district, so that we can, again, have walking accessibility, because we do not want to have pedestrians intercept the road to get there.
Understood.
All right, so if we look at the front entrance, any concerns there?
I'd be curious about the same concern you had on the western side.
Yeah.
But I also wonder if there's a potential safety issue there? If you're going to have twenty-foot-tall trees right by the entrance.
And the other thing to consider there is, they do have at least more trees there, because they have them coming along in the front area. They have three coming along the western border, then they have two in front of the first unit, and then they have an additional two maples at the entrance, and even potentially you could count another one. So they've got a much closer grouping. Are you intending to put the fence, the split rail fence, along that entrance way?
Yeah, we would like to.
Yeah, I think that that would look, make, make it look really good. Again, keeping with the rural character of the split rail fence.
Absolutely.
At the entrance. I assume it's a vinyl split rail? Is that what you're doing, or are you?
Uh, no, we, we want to do treated lumber, stained.
That'll be nice.
Thank you.
Potential same issue, so look at it, although it doesn't look as bad here of the signage, right-of-way, just keep that in mind.
How wide is that front with those, with their four arborvitae?
I measured it as two-hundred feet.
Two-hundred feet with four of them?
Yeah.
And they're only four feet?
But they do have the other trees slightly tucked back, right, not on the main, right, but before you get to any building.
Do you know how long it's going to take those four foot arborvitae to grow?
They are one of the fastest growing, but they will take forever to grow.
Unless the deer get to them.
Ten years. Yeah. But I really don't. But I really don't know that they can do much, quite frankly, with this entrance, because that's also a retaining pond up there, correct? So, you have a retention basin on the left side, you have trees surrounding that. So, the only place that you could put trees, if you added more arboridie's or did a replacement of arboridie's with something else, would be really your only option at that entrance because of the pond. The retention, retention basin, detention?
Detention.
I always get those two confused.
Well, you could potentially put green giants there. They basically look like arboridie's, they just...
That's what he has down here, the arboridie green giants. They are, well, they're supposed to be.
Generally, people, they grow with multiple trunks though, right? Straight on. So, how does one go about measuring the caliper of that?
They are a bush, because they're not, they don't have a trunk.
Yeah.
Do we want to continue on and then create a list of conditions, potential conditions at the end and see if we can reach an agreement? Or do we want to?
Why don't we move on, because we'll be here all night?
Right. So, if we look at the east side, again, center road entrance coming south, that is adjacent to another business, B one property. Any concerns with that portion of the property?
I'm just curious, is there, is there any mounding along the east side here and the northeast side?
Uh, there's a little bit of mounding just south of that welland area that you don't see on that plan, but on the drainage pattern plan, you'll see the topography for a little bit of mounding. Done our best to comply with the request of the BZA and zoning commission in earlier meetings, while also, you know, working around engineering constraints.
What's the height on that?
Only, only a few feet in such a small area. In order to build a mound that's mowable, either a three-to-one or four-to-one slope, you can only go so tall in that small span.
So, two to three feet of mounding, and then you'll put the trees, will the trees be in front of the mounding or on the mounding?
They would be on the mounding in that, in that area.
And how far, I'll try to, I'm sorry, the virtual audience will look at this, so the mounding will start about here?
No, it'll start just where the property line breaks and goes east, you know, where, where the residential lots, right at that corner, yes.
And then it'll go this direction.
No, no, no. Three narrow lots that are coming off of Center Road at that corner, it'll run north, north along the B one.
Okay, so it'll come, this is actually business, so there's a small business right here.
Right.
But you're talking about from here, it'll come?
North, correct, yes.
A little ways.
Yes.
Do you have any ideas to?
Is that what the thing is?
No, because that's, that's what I was asking, that's not, because it goes all the way up to there.
Retention pond.
What was your question, I'm sorry?
Approximately how many feet?
About a hundred feet or so, a hundred and fifty feet.
Two to three foot and a hundred feet. Any other questions on that section? Again, we're just talking about the vertical section on this mountain. Okay, so if we look at the portion of the parcel that's running east to west there, you have fifty foot of that, and that, by my count, there's about four hundred and sixty feet of space in that direction. Approximately fifty to sixty feet of that is adjoining a business lot, a B one. The rest of it is adjoining residential lots. When I counted the number of trees here, I'm seeing twenty trees. And if we look at, let's see, this is page sixty-nine. This is six B eight C. Screening of residential uses. When a lot in a business district abuts a residential district, a screening buffer at least twenty-five feet in width within the required setback areas along the common boundary shall be required to promote harmony with adjacent residential property in compliance with the following regulations. One, screening within the buffer area shall consist of one or a combination of the following. A dense vegetative planting incorporating trees and/or shrubs of a variety that shall be equally effective in winter and summer. Trees and/or shrubs shall be adequately spaced to form a solid, continuous visual screen within three years after initial installation. Option two, and this is and/or's. An opaque structure such as a solid masonry wall or a solid fence that is compatible with the principal structure. And/or, a landscaped earthen mound or berm at least five feet high. And/or, existing natural vegetation that in its natural state forms a solid screen with a height not less than six feet. And then, item two, the height of the screening shall comply with the following. Visual screening walls, fences, or mounds and fences in combination shall be a minimum of six feet high measured from the natural grade in order to accomplish the desired screening effect. Vegetation shall be a minimum of six feet high measured from the natural grade in order to accomplish the desired screening effect. The required height shall be achieved no later than twelve months after the initial installation. The location of the wall, fence, or vegetation shall be placed within the buffer area to maximize the screening effect as determined by the Township Zoning Commission. And then dumpsters and loading areas shall be enclosed on all sides of the opaque fence. So, it looks like you're attempting to achieve the regulation through trees. But across that entire section, I'm only seeing twenty trees, and that's four hundred feet. So, even if we put, sorry, there's four hundred and ten feet of residential property that you're abutting, forgetting about the zoning, the business district parcel. So, there's four hundred and ten feet, and in that you're planting twenty trees. That amounts to four, forty feet per tree, twenty feet per tree? Twenty, right, twenty feet per tree. I don't know how you're achieving a screening of six foot, at a height of six foot with these trees. These trees are only six foot tall. So, you would have to have numerous rows clustered together and many more trees in order to create that solid screen that's required regardless of which one or more of these you achieve or which one of these you choose to do in order to get the solid screening. I don't see how that meets the requirements.
The concern would be clustering them too closely together and that they all die and then there's no screening.
So, what about, and why can't you do mounding? Or, because there's other options, mounding or fencing to help achieve that purpose.
And it should be noted that this is the exact same tree count that was approved through BZA.
The BZA does not review the final site plan. That in the BZA said in condition three, that it actually had to be approved by us. Because we're the agent, we're the commission and the body that's responsible for reviewing and approving landscape designs.
We can add as many trees as you'd like to see there.
You've only got twenty-five feet, and that's why I'm wondering if you're able to even get enough trees or if we need to look at another option. I think my preferable option has always been a mound there, because one, I'm trying to make sure that any water flow is captured and pulled back into this pond, if there is any. And two, a mound plus trees will create, you know, a much more natural setting and give you a much higher total elevation of blockage than just these trees. And so, or the other option that you have is a fence of some sort. I don't know that a fence is natural, and so, you know, again, Mr. Bendoff is here as well, and he can speak to that. And if there's any other residents that are, have adjoining properties, I'd like to hear from them as well. But this, this section, when you're a business abutting a residential, I don't see that you're coming even close to meeting that section of the code.
And, you know, when I read it, specifically, it says that the screening buffer is at least twenty-five feet in width. So, even with a fence, there still needs to be more stuff either in front of or behind it. It can't just be a fence.
Right, and I think that that also goes back to the idea that, you know, you want this to try to blend in. The definition says, shall be required to promote harmony with adjacent residential properties. So, it's not just a fence because, or just a mound, because that won't provide this harmony that we're seeking. You've got to have some combination, but what we need to do is make sure that there is this solid screen, and then we make sure that whatever that solid screen is blends in.
I think I'd prefer to see fencing along that property line for the sake of our residents. So, if you're okay with it, yeah, I would like to put in a six-foot privacy fence in combination with some trees there.
And those trees would probably have to be on both sides of the fence, would that be?
Why would that be?
Because, again, we're worried about the harmony with the residential. So, they, the residents and the residential parcels need to have something that blends in. They're not supposed to be looking at just a fence, because it's, again, promoting this harmony of blending from the perspective of those residential lots.
Okay, sure, yeah, we can put trees on either side, that's not a problem.
Personally, I'd like to see something more natural, I'm not sure people want to be staring at a fence.
The code reads that a fence is suitable, so I would think that that would be suitable.
What's your aversion, just so that I understand, what is your aversion to a mound there?
My aversion is creating more water issues for the neighbors, which they've voiced very clearly, they have. Our, my other issue is putting a mound there. Our duty, and as it's been engineered, is to capture all rainwater on our property. If we put a mound there, then there is a portion of it that's not running onto our property, and we can't capture that water. And I think that that's an issue from a stormwater management perspective.
Are you saying that you are actually going to capture all the water that's in that twenty-five-foot space right now? In other words, you're going to, because right now, that twenty-five foot is likely graded towards the residential, as it probably should be. So, you're, I agree with you, you're supposed to capture most of the water, but you're not capturing it within that twenty-five-foot space anyway, because that is going to naturally be graded towards the residential districts. So, if you put a mound, you're not changing how much water is going to be going towards the residential in any way.
That would certainly be graded to drain into that pond.
That twenty-five foot is going to be graded to?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And it's also a very tight area, again, going back to the mowable slopes. I mean, you're looking at possibly a three-foot mound along that twenty, within that twenty-five-foot buffer that's mowable.
I don't, I mean, if we look at Redwood Falls, Redwood Falls has some pretty high mounts, and I don't know that they're more than twenty-five foot wide, you know, twenty-five foot wide, and there's plenty of grass on those mounts that they're cutting.
I can't speak to that, I don't know.
There's an awful lot of property that drains towards Center Road, it comes, comes south, pretty good distance. Many, many of those homes and other things along Center Road going east here do have issues with really heavy rains and high water.
Because it's draining towards Center Road.
That's correct.
And that's why, that's why I was asking, is, is, is he, is this portion of the property actually going to be captured by this pond? I think that this portion is likely to be flowing that way, because that seems like the natural flow path.
That might be the flow path right now.
Yeah, but it sounds like they're planning on changing that to make it so that it captures, which is fine to go into the stormwater.
I think they're trying to prevent the water going into the neighbors, so that's why they want to capture it. I think that's the...
That is correct, thank you.
Are there any other concerns? Mr. Bendoff, I know, well... Mr. Bendoff, if I could, I'd like us to finish going along our site, and then I'll call on any residents that may have a concern, and then we'll, we'll address it. So, just write it down, if you want to make a list, and then we'll come back to you. So, that's the, go ahead.
No, I was just curious, I mean, like I said, I have an affinity towards the nature side of it.
I do too.
It's a, it's a personal thing, and I mean, the code itself does speak to that is an option to put a fence there. But I think that's the purpose of this board is to come together and let's figure out what we can make best. What's the right thing?
So, I would say, yes, putting a fence is totally fine if that's what you want to do, but that's one of the things you would need to do, you can't just put in a fence.
Right.
So, that's...
I've stated that.
With trees or?
Yeah, well, Pat, well, what if we, what if he mounded a little bit and then staggered those pines? Right, you have two rows, basically, and they're staggered.
You're going to need a lot of trees to get a solid screen. I mean, even two rows is not enough to, because it's a solid screen at six foot. You're either talking about very tall trees.
No, there's, if you're going to have a couple-foot mound, right? And you have, you already have six feet, you already have six feet, you're at eight feet now. It's better than an eight-foot fence, I think. And I, I did it at my old house, and it took, didn't take long for those six-foot trees to grow, and you couldn't see through them.
They were some form of pine or something?
Well, I bought blue spruce, which is a mistake, yeah, disease. So, I spent a lot of money spraying them and keeping them nice.
And that's our concern with the spacing as well, is they are diseased, spruce trees in general are disease-prone, and you want to keep a certain distance to make sure that if one is diseased, then it doesn't spread like wildfire.
And I understand and appreciate that concern. I think that it, you almost, you have such little space, you almost have to do a combination of things, and I think that's where all of us are going down on. I think, for the most part, we prefer some sort of mounding, but I don't think any of us are disagreeing that you're not, it's not completely impossible to just cram in a bunch of trees in this section of the code. If there's nothing else here, and again, we'll revisit it, because I'd like to go through our review, I'd like to have any public comments come through, and then we'll come up with our final conditions and work with Mr. Winerman on it. There's no other concerns from the commission on that section. I'd like to turn to the final section, which is the east edge going north and south. And on that, I didn't see anything except for potentially the trash storage. Is that small square the trash storage?
No, that is a maintenance garage.
So, where?
Fully enclosed, everybody has their own personal trash service with Republic or whoever the township services with.
Kimball.
Kimball, sorry, I knew I was going to get the wrong one. Just like you and your single-family home, they have their own trash cans, they roll them out at the end of the driveway, dump truck comes and picks them up.
Okay.
The Kimball contract is only specific to residents, so as a business, you would have your choice of your own provider.
Okay. No preference here, so we'll stick with the, stick with the trend here in the township.
I did not see any other issues with that, that abuts a business district. Any other concerns from the zoning, the commission? Nope. Perfect. Given that we will be probably voting on this soon, before we move on, I'd like to have an opportunity for public to comment on this particular plan, if the zoning commission is okay with that. Mr. Bendoff. And just for the record, please state your name and address, we can go up.
Okay, my name is Joe, I go by my middle name Larry Bendoff. I've been a proud resident of Hankley for twenty-five years at twenty-six sixty-six Center Road, which is lot six, which is immediately to the east of lot seven, which is the B one property, which is owned by Dave Terry and is not included in the plans. I have pictures, and I've given them to you, I don't know if the, if the audience would want to see them to give you an idea of what they're talking about. The issue is, is this screening going to give me the privacy, some of the privacy that I've had, where I've had complete dense trees around east, south, and west sides of my property and three oh three on the front? And again, I mean, the pictures speak, a picture speaks a thousand words.
Mr. Bendoff, if you have a particular picture, I mean, you've sent many, so if you have a particular picture that you'd like to reference, I'm happy to display it, I'll just need a, I'll need some sort of identifier on it, I've got them.
I've got them marked, because you know, as you know, I've got pictures and I've marked them.
And they've also all been... And they've also all been distributed to you, but.
This is the main picture. This is, this one is, you want to put them up first? Please charge your device.
But I need, so that one's got a red car. Okay, hang on.
This is looking directly to the west on David Terry's property, which is 6060 Y, and they did not cut any trees there. Now, at the very beginning, when we talked about setbacks, I was supposed to have been given 100 feet. Nobody told me that the only thing that had to be 100 feet from that was a building or a structure. And I have the map, I have a different map than you have, and it shows the retention pond at the south end of my property, which is within 25 feet.
Mr. Bendoff, before we talk about this 100-foot setback, the 100-foot setback applied when they were, had Dave Terry's lot as part of this proposed plan. And so you had a business lot that was immediately adjacent to your residential that was part of this, this project.
Right.
They've separated that. So you now have a vacant business lot adjacent to your parcel. So that 100-foot setback doesn't apply to that, because the 100, they're able to be business-to-business town.
Correct. Okay, and that's okay. So, and that's why this, everybody's bringing up the subject of mounding.
Can you maybe go back to, sir, can you go back to the podium?
These are the ones that you can look at. Like I said, this is what it looks like now.
Okay.
This is the south end, and, and this is the kind of buffering I have. Now, when you mentioned, well, I'll go back, and you've got, these three pictures are the ones that you should look at. You shall have pictures of it.
We do.
Okay.
But I'll try to find each one of those.
What we're talking about on the south end, first of all, let's, I'm going to go back to the beginning as far as I can remember. When Mr. Weinerman talked about the retention pond at the south end, it starts at the southwest corner of my lot, and it goes approximately, I don't know, 200 feet. And that's where that 100 feet got eaten up by the, the retention pond, which gave me 20 to 25 feet. Now, I've talked, I don't know if I should mention names, but I've talked with Davy Tree, who's done the surveying, both times when they were out there doing that surveying. And I asked him, and they told me, excuse me, they told me that mounding is not going to solve the problem. And what I want to make clear from looking at that picture was, yes, the, the normal flow of water does come in a southwest direction from the south. It's the natural grading. But, and here's the big but. My lot at Lot 6, we have the, we have those culverts, which are three, maybe four feet deep. To the east of me and to the west of me, whenever there's a normal rain, that, those lots, those ditches are filled. And my neighbor at Lot, um, 6, 7, Lot 8 to 9, her name is Kim Solak, she couldn't be here. Whenever it rains, and I, and you've got pictures of those from the original thing, her front yard, her side yards, and her backyard are so deep, I thought she was kidding. She said you could drive a canoe in them. And I saw, you saw the pictures, they're, I mean, they're that deep on a normal rain. And the point is, of all the rain, even now, the rains that we've been getting, the heavy rains, in 25 years of living there, and that's the first thing I looked at, because I've had a history here. My aunt lived here since 1957. I knew all about Hinkley. We came out here every weekend. I love this town, and it is, I'm trying to keep it, what you call it, a small town, big hearts. If I digress, please, I've been sitting here waiting. But the point is that I don't get a drop. I mean, maybe a couple of inches in my culvert. And most importantly, I get no water at all in my front yard where my leach bed is. And if, at the very beginning, Mr. Weinerman said that he was, that the retention pond behind me was going to go all the way west to 130th. Now, the last I heard from a reliable source here in the township is they had planned to go west, but then they were going to go at some point, it would have to be on their property or, I don't know if Dave Terry allowed it, but they were going to make a right angle turn and go north to 303 to dissipate all of that retention pond. That's not what he said. I, that's the first thing that hit me, is that he said it's all going to go west. Yes, it should, because that'll take out any possibility of water coming. And as I said, I, yeah, the water admittedly, it goes southwest. But you can look at my backyard today or before, and you'll see, again, I, I can't stress enough how there is no water there. There's no water. I don't, I mean, yeah, I, I don't know why, I don't know why. But I, I do know this, when I bought my property, my ground, I am literally at the apex on 303 of these, of these lots, where from my house to the west, it slows down enough that the water stays there. And it's blocked, because Dave Terry's lot doesn't have any drainage, so, but it's blocked there. And I have an older driveway, I'm under grandfathering clauses. So if the water should go under my, it, water does not go under my driveway or under my culvert. If it does, and, and yes, the, the retention pond is supposed to dissipate it within 24 hours. Okay, maybe so, maybe not. But, and, and the question, and I remember this, it's on record, that was asked. Pride 1 stated that, no, in 100 years, or it, 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 don't worry about it, it's going to make it better. And all I said was, if, the biggest word in the English language is if. If it does, who's responsible for fixing my driveway? And who's responsible for cleaning out my front yard and possibly having to get a new leach bed at a very expensive cost? The whole issue is about my privacy that I've had. I had, I knew, I knew about Hinkley. By the grace of God, I was able to find a home after having lived in an apartment after my mother died. I don't want sympathy, I just tell it like it is. And I found this home in Hinkley where I had been, had a history and knew of it. And to find a house, not only in Hinkley that I could afford, but also that was, my aunt had problems with water drainage. And the first thing I looked at was I saw the house on a mound. So again, to reiterate, again, the water, for some reason, well, because it's at the apex. And, and again, all that water to the east of me, that poor woman at 2646, Lots 9 and 6, 7, 8, 9 and 10, Kim Solak, she gets all the water. I mean, and I'll have a drop like this, and hers is up to the thing, and it's on her front yard. People have said that they were going to do that and anything. So I, I agree that that's the water flow, but why it doesn't hit my property in 25 years, including right now, I don't know, and that's what those pictures will show. And again, the, the issue I want to make is about the privacy. Look, I, I live, I, I, I don't want to bring my personal issues into this, but this home, the day I went up there, I had, I had, forget my past life, we all have issues. And I've had issues, and I needed something like this. I needed peace and quiet and privacy. I lived in apartment houses, and you know what that's like, the windows are open, people are playing music, or, or people above you, below you. When I found this house and I saw that I was separated on either side by trees, that I was told, because of the grandfathering, only my home and the next lot next to me that had buildings on them could ever be built, ever, as R1. So Amal Woney had owned all that property even before I moved, this, my house was built in 1941. Amal Woney owned all that property, and I know from speaking with this Kim, that he had put this, all that land when he died around, I think it was around 2004, don't quote me. He stated that nothing could be done for 10 years. No sale of the property at all at R1. So until that, until 2017, it was still as owned as R1. And they couldn't find buyers for it, because you couldn't, you literally couldn't build a, a, a home on a 66, like 505 feet deep, 0.88, 8 tenths of an acre. And then, so since that didn't work, in 2017, they succeeded in changing it from R1 to B1. Okay, they wanted me to get in on it. Oh yeah, you're going to make a lot of money. I'm going to tell you right now, and I told everybody, I don't, I don't care about the money. I care about a peaceful place to live in this crazy world we live in, where, you know, I, I mean, and, and according to that picture, you'll see that with those trees cut down to the west of me, I can look out my bedroom, bathroom, and kitchen windows, and I can see the sheet sign a quarter of a mile down the road. And that's in the winter. And even when the trees come out, you can see, a, a, and you made the point that you cannot, I mean, if you have trees 40 feet apart, definitely, what do I want? What do I want? Okay, but try to follow me, I'm, I'm really, you know, I, I've taken this matter very seriously.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bendoff. The, you know, this, this is a final site plan, and so we're really looking at a lot of these landscaping designs at this point. You know, we've talked about the water issues before, they've done the water study to that point. And so I think what we'd really like to hear from you is particularly on this, you're, the, where your property abuts the business district, what would you like to see there?
What I want very specifically, Anetin, I have that code that you have, it's page 60, the, the page 69, where it spells out, and it says specifically, it uses the word opaque. And it also says that it should be in, in, and what's the term? I'm going to get the specific term. You mentioned it, it was on the first page, that it should be.
An opaque structure such as a solid masonry wall or a solid fence that is compatible with.
And to do that, I don't, again, I was told that an idea of a mound would not work and to put some spindly, I'm going to, and nobody's used the word pine trees yet, but we've used the word shrubbery. I'm thinking, and without the mound, what I want, I want, I want the wooden fence opaque. I'll settle for the eight feet. I was going to ask for 10 feet. I just don't want to be able to look over and see them as well as he wants to make sure that they don't see me. Well, what are they going to look at? A house that's, you know, 400 feet. But at the same time, that's not enough, as you said, just a fence is not going to be enough. You need some sort of shrubbery, and I'm saying pine trees so that it's totally opaque.
Those trees that are adjacent to the property line are spruce, so those are a pine tree. It's a six-foot tall spruce tree.
Where specifically? I've got the plan too, but.
Along your rear side and along, let me, Eric, pull it back up.
Well, those are dead. Okay, all right. This, see, this is a retention pond.
These are spruces, Norway spruces.
Oh, they are?
So all of the white, those are all Norway spruce trees.
Okay, well, I still say, again, what I'm asking, you asked me a direct question, what I'm looking for. And I think you mentioned on both sides of the fence. It's, I was, you know, when you mentioned shrubbery, I thought, oh, well, maybe. Forget the mound. I, I say, and I, I hope they, they, they said they really don't want the mounded. I don't think that's going to do any good as far as the drainage anyway. So what I'm asking for specifically is pine trees. But you're not going to find a pine tree that's three feet high or whatever, that's, it should be the same height as the fences. So eight feet tall. By definition, that is a mature pine tree, okay? And I want those spaced so that it's, again, it maintains that traditional view of what it would look like to be in, in harmony with the existing character. There's the words, harmony of the existing character of it. Otherwise, my privacy is gone, and that's what those pictures show. That's what I would have to live with. And that, and we're talking about noise, we're talking about lights, not just from Great Lakes, not just from across the street at Aldis, because my neighbor has to put up black shading on her front house so she doesn't see those lights at night. But, and the other way, going this way, going west, in the summer, what am I, I'd like to open my windows up. I'm going to hear that traffic, which the trees, believe me, the trees have blocked out that noise and the lights. Now, right now, there, there's spindly trees, and I have to put up with that now. But once they green up, if they green up, some of those trees are dead already, I admit that. And, and all of those trees are on David Terry's property. So I don't know if I've answered your question, but again, what I want is, I want, I want the, the wooden fence, eight feet tall, completely opaque. I, I don't know about sliding this way, I would think sliding up and down, you, you tell me which is the best way. And then to have the trees for their purpose to block it out and on my side. So on each side of the wooden fence, I want pine trees, eight feet tall to match the thing. I think that would be enough. Because otherwise, anytime I look in my backyard, and that's what those pictures show you, and, and I have pictures in the summer too, what it looked like, you couldn't see anything. So, I mean, I did my homework, and, and I followed the rules, and yes, okay, they even went to B1. And, and, and even then, it was a while before they got any, I, I know there were other ones that tried in, didn't get in because of whatever rules. So I'm just asking for, you know, what I, I deserve as a single resident, and I'm not the only one involved, but the other people just, they didn't show up, and I know why, but they're letting me do all the talking. But they are suffering, and they will suffer more with this drainage problem. But, and my specific issue is, yes, I think I'm entitled to the privacy that I need to exist. I'm 72 years old, and I haven't had a life. I live alone, I have a dog, I don't party or anything. And so this is my respite, my, my, from the world. I mean, when I get in there, I go in there, this is my home, a home, man's home is his castle. It sounds corny, okay? And, and then as far as what do the trees do, I think it's self-explanatory, but I'm going to throw this out as corny as it sounds. But there's a poem, I think everybody's, a poem called Trees by Joyce Kilmer. What a tree does, and, and to spell it out from a, what would it be, a chemical point of view. Trees, by definition, take in carbon dioxide, and they give us oxygen. See, the more trees you cut down, the more carbon dioxide, and that's why they tell people to go, I go onto Hinkley. You're going to, you, you don't realize how much you're helping your health by doing that, because you're getting more oxygen and they're eating up the carbon dioxide. I could go into all about this, this, my greenhouse lighting and all that kind of stuff, and there's a lot of things we, that they don't mention. But now, if I'm getting off the subject, and if I haven't answered your question, please let me know what else you need to know.
I think you've provided ample.
Okay, and, and it's so, basically what I'm asking for is, and I, I thought of the shrubs, but the shrubs aren't going to be eight feet tall. They might, and, and they'd have, you know, to, 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 to make, to make them opaque, even though that, that wooden fence is going to be opaque, the trees also have to keep in with the existing character of that. This corner of Hinkley has always been rural. And, and that were big, you know, we've talked about that for on and on and on. It's a rural character. That's what Hinkley has always stood for, and that's what makes this such a wonderful place to live. And all I'm thinking of, not just myself, but I'm thinking of going forward, I want people to have a place where they can get, come off of 71 and not have a traffic jam at that corner of West 130th and 303, and then get home, and then they're in the woods, and you get out, and it's immediately, it de-stresses you. It does for me, and I know it does for other people. And when people are coming home from work off 71, and they're going to be stuck at that traffic light, there are going to be a lot of people that don't like it. And Mr. Weinerman also even said that, you know, the people that are on the south end of his property, they may not like it. If they don't like, like it, they can move. Fine, okay, we'll see how many people see what they're really getting into. And at the very beginning of this whole talk, back over a year ago, it was stated that these property, that this was supposed to be for Hinkley residents who had too much acreage. acreage, and, and as they're getting older, all right, I'm seventy-two, I know people are eighty, eighty years old, and, you know, are they willing to give up that kind of a privacy and live in, they call them apartments, okay, I call them, I call them a duplex.
I hate...
Okay, okay, I, I, if I get off the...
It's already fifty-three, and we've got...
I understand, I understand. I just wanna make my point that I would like the, the board to go with me and, and give me the, as much privacy as they can. Uh, and it's, you know, we've got the five hundred feet, that's, that's an area too, when I go in my backyard, I don't wanna be looking at, at the homes or the retention pond. Okay, so, I think, I think I've, I'll probably forget something, but, um, I, I know that you, I, I've, I've done due diligence, I've sent pictures, I've talked with everyone, and, uh, it's just a matter of, I mean, you know, let's let this go, I mean, I'm willing to, they won the battle, okay? Uh, I'm not gonna, it's not gonna stay rural, all right? But it's, it's opening the door across the street, Aldis, I mean, they, they had to have five hundred feet, now they've got down because they cut that thing out, they're here, they've got three hundred feet. Now I'm worried, I shouldn't say this, I think there's gonna be a business gonna try to come in there. And the last point I wanna make is, again, I'm lots six, lot five is lot Terry, lot six is me, lot seven and eight are woodlands that are unbuildable, they're B, and they're still R one. And then I find out that Pride One actually owns or purchased or whatever, however they got it, they owned that second lot, which is lot six, lot eight, which is right next to Kim Solak's property. What are they gonna do with it? Are they, uh, they, you can't use it for a road, obviously, were they gonna put a pipe through it and, and run it to Three O Three? I don't know, but I just don't think, I, I don't know why they would do that, and, and it's putting me, I'm thinking ahead, all right, there's, so that leaves, uh, lot, I keep saying six, seven, eight, that means lot eight, and seven, which is owned by Harzach Realty, and then my home, and then Dave Terry's lot, that's four lots times sixty-six feet is two hundred and sixty-some feet, and I'm telling you right now, they're gonna rezone that as B one, once, but they're, they...
They, they might try to.
They might, and, and again, I as the owner, they, I don't have to go with that.
I understand.
So, you know, good luck, and, but I'm gonna, I wanna stay here till I die, and that's all, I'll end with that. I love it here, and, and, and I care, I'm, well, I'll, I said, I appreciate your letting me talk, and, and you know most of it, and I was willing, if anybody else had questions here that they wanted to know, but those pictures are worth a thousand words to see if you, and I, the first thing I, I'm sorry, the first thing I said at the first meeting was, do you want another Brunswick at this corner of Hinkley? And I don't have to tell anybody who lives here that the traffic on there is just unbelievable, all time to date. So, you know, that's up to you. You gotta live, once you cut down a tree, you can't put it back up. Okay, thank you very much, and, and, you know, I just hope that we can, you can try to keep Hinkley rural as, as, as much as we can, this was a rural area.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
So at this point, I, I think that, you know, we'll go through the checklist of items for our final site plan, and then we'll do a motion, and we'll have to come up with any conditions, or if we're just going to not write rejection or approval, we'll need to decide that.
The site plan is, is still in...
Yeah, we are. Why don't we...
Yeah.
I, I have gotta use the restroom, we've gotta take a, a motion to extend the meeting, and then we'll go through the final site plan, that's okay.
I'll move to extend.
Do we, I don't, we don't need a traditional recess, do we?
Thank you.
For a phased development, propose schedule for completion of improvements that are designed to relate to, benefit, or use by the entire development. Such schedules shall be submitted with the first phase and shall relate completion of such improvements to completion of one or more phases of the development. That's not applicable. There's not a multi-phase development. A road culvert permit were required by the Medina County Highway Engineering Department? I don't think that there is a road culvert permit required here, is there?
Um.
There is.
No. Culvert? Road culvert?
Well, I know when you...
So it's in a...
For residential.
Yes.
Free, okay.
A letter from the appropriate public agency stating that the proposed development or use conforms or will conform to all applicable sanitary sewer, water grading, and surface drainage flood plan and wetland regulations if applicable. Yes, we've received that. The next ones for conservation developments, it doesn't apply. Other information necessary for the evaluation of the site plan is de-necessary by the zoning inspector. In the case of a subdivision review, the zoning commission review for zoning compliance only. There is no additional information requested, so not applicable. And the applicant shall pay the fees set forth by the trustees. That has been done. Additional review criteria: The plan shows a proper relationship between existing thoroughfare, service roads, driveways, and parking areas, the requirements of this, to the requirements of this zoning resolution. Yes. The development will result in a harmonious grouping of buildings within the proposed development in relation to the existing and proposed uses of adjacent properties. For the most part, yes. The development will preserve and be sensitive to natural characteristics of the site in a manner that complies with the applicable regulations set forth in the zoning resolution. Resolution, yes. All development features, including the principal buildings, open spaces, service roads, driveways, and parking areas are still located and related as to minimize the possibility of any adverse effects upon adjacent property development. Yes. Provide evidence that grading, surface drainage, and sediment control provisions comply with all applicable sections of the Medina County Engineering Code for Subdivision Development. Yes. Provide evidence that the design and construction standards of all private streets and any public improvements shall conform to the provisions of the Medina County Code of Subdivision Development. Yes. Maximum possible privacy for adjacent residential properties shall be provided through good design and use of the proper building materials and landscaping according to the requirements set forth in the Hinkley zoning resolution. Yes. The architectural design of the building shall be developed with consideration given to the relationship of adjacent development in terms of building height, mass, texture, materials, lines, and patterns and character. Yes. Building location and placement shall be developed with consideration given to minimizing removal of trees and change of topography. Yes. On-site circulation shall be designed to provide for adequate fire and police protection and safe and efficient pedestrian vehicular circulation. Did you have a comment, Mr. Marzulli? Nope. Okay. Yes. Roadway systems and services, parking areas, entrances, exits, and pedestrian walkways within the development are designed to have access to public streets in a manner that minimizes traffic hazards or congestions. Yes. Lighting shall be designed as to create neither a hazard nor a nuisance to adjacent properties or uses. We haven't spoken much about lighting outside of the leasing space, and then I would assume some lighting at the signs. Are you doing any other lighting within subdivision?
The units themselves have coach lights on either side of the garage. Beyond that, we did not intend to put in streetlights just to be conscious of light pollution for that exact reason. The coach lights do a nice job of illuminating the streets to where someone would feel comfortable walking in the evening, but not so much to where it's intrusive.
Perfect. How great are those?
I don't know. It lumens off the top of my head.
They're just a typical garage light that you have on every...
Not like a floodlight, but like coach lights and...
Yeah.
Like a 60 watt bulb, yes.
60 watts.
Trash storage and other outdoor storage areas shall be screened from adjacent streets and properties. For the most part, that's true. I do have some concern that your maintenance building on the rear side isn't necessarily screened from adjacent properties. I don't know if there's anything that could be done there, maybe a couple arborites or something, but that would be the only caveat that I see to this condition. Anything else on that? No. The final site plan shall substantially conform to any preliminary site plan approved for the site, and that's yes. If the proposed development is to be carried out in phases, again, and that's not applicable. Mr. Manley, any comments, questions?
No.
Go ahead.
I have one comment, Marcus.
Go ahead.
I was told that we do have a sidewalk policy that's township-wide that I will get a copy for you for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just very quickly, the staff report for the, from the Medina Planning Commission came out, and they recommended to approve with modifications. The modifications that they had requested were relatively minor. There, since subdivision is serviced by private sanitary sewer and water, there's no sanitary engineer sign-off required. They have to submit for sites reserved for public use or common use of property owners, for parks, playgrounds, other uses, a description of proposed covenants, conditions, restrictions must be submitted. So if there's an HOA submission related to the common areas, agreements and provisions for any community association, owners association, or homeowners association with provision for association membership and responsibility. You don't have an...
No HOA.
No. The construction administration and maintenance of all proposed common property, common facilities, and common lands. Again, I don't, there's no...
It's all under one ownership.
All owners.
Right.
All related to which watershed boundaries indicating in which watershed the subdivision is located, and all known underground drainage tile systems must be presented and inserted into the map for their approval. A copy of the developer's notice of intent must be obtained from the Ohio EPA Stormwater Management if permitted, if applicable. I think that you do have to do...
That's been provided.
The following data, let's see, there was a few things that they found that wasn't submitted on the final plat. An original Mylar, the final plan, to signature and seal the registered surveyor, notarized certification by the owner or owners of the subdivision, and the offer of the dedication of streets and other public areas, and that there are no untated taxes or assessments. Certification from the township that the final site plan is submitted is in compliance with the local zoning standards and requirements, and certification of county engineer that all required improvements have been satisfactory installed, and/or financial guarantees have been provided to cover the construction, acceptance of offers of dedication by county commissioners, when all improvements have been constructed or financial guarantees and construction agreements have been approved. And then the proposed final site plan fills the purpose and intent and meets the standard requirements of the subdivision regulations, which they're referring to, I think the subdivision regulations of the county, but we do have some subdivision regulations for the township as well. The final plat is in substantial conformity with the preliminary plan and approval conditions with the exception of the items listed above. The proposed subdivision appears to be in conformity with the Hinkley Township Zoning Commission, and then there's upon receipt of a Highway Engineers approval. So there was nothing that was too substantial with respect to what the planning commission had to say. With this, I would like now to open it up to what specific conditions we would like to see put on the properties so that we can kind of work through what the motion will look like moving forward. So we spoke that there's going to probably have to be more trees along the western boundary in order to comply with this section 6B. I think it's page 68.
So I would like to ask you guys to consider, we have 33, I just quickly counted, I could be off one or two, roughly 33 trees screening those buildings from the street. Now, whether it's in that building set, those trees sit in the building setback or not, some do, some don't. But I think for the purposes of screening, the trees to the west of building six, the trees to the west of building two, building one, and building seven do exactly what they're intended to do, is screen those buildings from the street. Now, if you'd like to see those trees moved into the building setback, that's an option, too. Our thought is, you know, this is the most aesthetic for residents to enjoy the trees next to their units versus sitting out by a street.
Is there anything saying you can't do both?
Is there anything saying we can't do both? No.
Can we look at this cluster of trees right here? I don't think any of those trees have any sort of foliage in the fall and winter, correct? Because that's maple, and then zelkova?
No, it's a redwood, dawn.
No, the redwood dawn are these, are these.
Those. Right. Oh, okay.
I'm talking about screening of these units along here. And so we, just as a consideration, you know, there's going to be no blockage of those units during winter months.
Redwood dawn, I believe, are deciduous. Might be wrong.
That, it's not a redwood. I'm referring to these, which are maple trees. Those are...
Those are, yeah. But what are, what are the other ones?
The purple.
Yeah, the zelkova. What is that? Well, it can't be very big. It's two inches, two...
No, that's caliber.
I think we're inflating two different code sections. This section does not speak to having the same coverage or screening as...
I agree. Your position or your was, look, let's look at the totality of, my screen went away. Let's look at the totality of the trees, and let's say, is that enough to provide screen? Maybe they're not in the roadway, but let's look at the totality. What I'm saying is, even if we look at the totality, I worry that some of the trees that you suggested won't provide any level of the screening to meet this section. So that's certainly a possibility to look at that, especially considering you have a culvert there. But I don't see that the trees that you have provide completely.
Deference, I also want to say, it's really not our place as a zoning commission to grant variances. It either meets our zoning code or it doesn't. And right now, it does not meet our zoning code. We've told him what he needs to do in order to get it to meet our zoning code, and we can't dicker back and forth over, okay, well, if you do this, and that's what the BZA is for. The BZA can be the one that says, all right, you don't have to have five trees every 100 feet. We cannot do that. Our role is to say, put five trees every 500 feet, or every 100 feet, and they gotta be six feet tall, and they gotta be two inches taking caliper. That's my reading. You correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just looking at this condition number three, where they introduced a little bit of a gray area into that exact comment. Sufficient, it's a condition that's already been granted, sufficient mounding, screening, and buffering shall be installed as determined by us.
Yeah, that's specifically about the, or at least my reading of it, is specifically for the mounding with regard to the residential properties. The screening for three...
Growth.
Three doesn't specify anything. Four specifies the industrial parkway. Three just says, sufficient screening, mounding, or buffing shall be installed as determined and approved by the zoning commission as part of the final site plan.
I agree with you, Matt.
I tend to.
There's zoning code here that was written with very specific screening requirements, and we have a landscaping plan that doesn't quite meet it. Just stay short of saying barely meets anything, but just, I'm with you, like, it just needs cleaned up. We're saying in other pieces of the final plan, there's mounding where there's not going to be mounding. I have an issue with that. Like, what else is in here that's, it's there, but it's not really there.
And so do you think that we are to the point that we just cannot approve this with conditions because the conditions would essentially be compliance, or, and so we should reject this plan and require a resubmital at the next hearing or at the next meeting? Or do you think that we can work through conditions and then require?
I don't think I'm at that.
The only thing I can...
I just said.
There's the logic for the mounding on the south end. It makes perfect sense, okay. But we get in some of these others. I think he has to go back and just kind of tweak this and make the changes with the additional trees and what have you, per our code. I appreciate that if you ever, you know, a judge may decide that number three takes care of everything. I choose at this time not to accept it. That three takes care of any changes that we could make. We have no right to make conditionals, and that's what we're asking for. That's what we're talking about. And we keep using the word condition. If you meet this condition, then we'll do this. I think we just ask them to take the time to redo parts.
I also feel, I have this sense also that, once we approve final site plan and we provide conditions, who follows up to ensure that they're actually enforced? How do we know that that stuff is actually happening?
Well, we, and to that point, we did that before, right? We required them for the Parkview Homes development, we required them to come back with it. They didn't have a signage.
And they came back with it.
And they came back with the signage.
I just don't see...
Approved with condition, and then we approved the sign on the next one, and that way they were able to continue on.
I just...
I don't know if we're even there yet, or if you're thinking that there's so many revisions that need to be made because of this basically 6B8 section that we should reject and ask for a resubmital altogether. Is that what?
I think there's too many conditions. When you take trees here, and there, and this, and that, and the other thing, that should just be redone. And again, I can accept that we kind of ignore the mound on the south end, because I understand this sort of thing. But other than that, we're, you know, I guess, that's why the code, the code is written a certain way for a specific purpose. And the choice is either to redo it, come back next month, or approach the BZA for another hearing. Not to be, make life tough, let's just make, get it done, and move on. It's been dragging on for how long? Year and a half?
I think so. With all due respect, I don't disagree with you. You know, I think we're only talking about two property lines in particular, right? We're talking about the property line that abuts the residential lots, and the property line on West 130th, I would greatly appreciate.
Potentially the one on Center Road.
And potentially the one on Center Road. I'd greatly appreciate if we could walk through those conditions. A, so I'm clear what you guys are looking for, and B, maybe we can come to a resolution and vote tonight.
Here's a copy of our code. Are you gonna do it, or aren't you?
Yeah, to his point, I've already indicated that I would comply. I need clear direction as far as what you guys are looking for, and I'm happy to comply so we can vote tonight.
I guess if you're looking for compliance, then we would just reiterate what is in the zoning.
6BA.
6BA, and have you identify that.
Right, right. Which, which, we spoke a lot about a lot of options, especially on the residential side.
But your choice, though. You...
Doesn't sound like it's my choice.
Well, he does have a point, because we said fencing, and then, you know, and the trees as well. So maybe we could, I know he's looking for guidance, and that's what he's asking us for.
I understand it.
Thank you.
Like, I'm adamant against the fencing. It sounds hideous.
I am, too. I'm not a fence person.
You have a resident who said...
He wants the fence.
That would be nice, with some trees on both sides.
But his property isn't adjacent to it.
Right.
It is, it is.
The rear, which is the area that...
It's the southern border of Mr. Bendoffer's property.
Well, on the southern border, not the, not his western border.
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, we can set, we can go around and identify the thing. I think we mostly have, you know, along the, so we talked about a potential eight-foot fence along the southern border as opposed to a six-foot fence, and that will provide hopefully a satisfaction of condition four, which requires mounding plus a minimum.
Along with trees.
Along with the trees, which are already there. That should probably be sufficient. Along the western, which is the 130th entrance, we need to see compliance along that roadway with 6B8A, which specifies the number of trees.
For the record, that's five trees per every 100 feet, less the drive aprons and, correct?
Correct.
Every 100 feet and fraction thereof. So if it's 101, that's another five feet, five trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they gotta be six foot tall, two inches in diameter. And then you have to also have, because it's not at least one of, you also have to have 20 shrubs for every 100 feet or fraction thereof. That's item two. So one and two are what you don't meet currently. So that's the west border. We talked about the sidewalk. I'll let trustee Augustine provide the requirements for that, if we can look at doing a sidewalk from the entrance to the B1 lot. Go ahead, Mr. Spelman.
Just going back to the northeast section there, I want to, I'd like to see this mound simply removed from the plat here.
Plat.
Yeah. This one going across the top here. If you're not gonna put it in, don't include it. It says landscape mounding.
Which one?
If we're not gonna, if we're not gonna put it there.
Mr. Bendoffer, I see. We'll get back to you.
I can, what did you?
This mound that's listed here along...
Right, right, right.
If we're not gonna, if they're not gonna put it in, don't include it in the plan.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying.
Right, okay. Great. I kind of liked it there, but...
Along the Center Road entrance, the same thing, the sidewalk towards the B1, depending on the subdivision language. And then also, you have to meet the compliance of 6B8 regarding trees and shrubs. And then the other small one would be the trash, well, sorry, the maintenance shed. Remember that that has to be shielded from adjoining lots, so you've got to do something on the rear side of that shed, of the maintenance shed.
Can I get something more specific? I don't want to, I want to be in compliance.
There is no, it's, it's not a super black and white area, so put some trees of some sort, arborites, tall trees, some sort of trees to conceal that from the adjoining properties. Basically what the code requires.
Specifically where?
The maintenance. Let me show my screen. The maintenance shed.
In the southeast.
Southeast, correct. There's a small square. He's got trees on the left and right, but not behind, which is where the adjoining property is. And then the final section, which is probably one of the most critical sections, is the business to residential border, which requires compliance with the 6B8D, excuse me, 6B8C, which requires basically shielding at six foot. And is our preference now fence plus trees, or mound plus trees, or what is the preference, so that he knows what our preference is on that?
I think you said you can't do a mound there?
I would prefer not to. I think that it invites issues for the neighbors.
Okay. Water flow specifically?
Right.
So fence plus trees.
Fence plus trees.
Mr. Bendoffer requested a wood. I understand why you might want to do vinyl. I assume you have a preference for vinyl?
I think we do vinyl on the privacy fencing, yes.
And so it requires six. Would you be able to, since you're doing eight on the other side, or would you have a preference for six? It doesn't matter.
I would prefer six. It's kind of more of a standard height. The eight foot's kind of special order, and there's vinyl shortages and things like that.
Are there any objections to a six-foot plus trees along?
Same density of trees as listed on the plan?
I would like to see an increase in density, certainly, because that's a vinyl fence that we're shielding, and also remember, we have to have them on both sides of that fence. Or I would say, at a minimum, we have to have it on the residential side of the fence, and I think for your own residence purposes, you might want it on your side, too. But certainly on the north side of that fence.
Okay. Can we agree to put the number of trees you see here on the residence side of the fence, and then there's more than likely that we'll put trees on our side as well? I just, I don't want to give a specific number in case there's other reasons that can...
How about a ballpark number?
I don't want to give a ballpark number. There's like 18 trees here, roughly. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, really, if he puts in the fence, he meets the requirement. He meets the requirement. But except for, I will say that there is also this requirement that there's harmony. So we do have some leeway as to what that is, and so there is certainly some requirement that we can make for vegetation. If 20 trees, you know, 20 trees 20 feet apart is sufficient, that's basically what he's proposing. Those are spruce trees, so they'll grow probably two feet per year. I mean, I think that that's a decent estimate of growth.
Eighteen inches.
Eighteen. That's pretty close. Eighteen inches a year, so those will grow up pretty quickly and meet it. Anything else?
I don't doubt that you put trees on your side of it as well, right? I don't think residents want to be looking at it from your perspective either. Honestly, with their location, they're gonna get plenty of sun, so they're gonna grow up very quick.
Yeah. However, there are some trees still remaining on Mr. Bendoffer's property, so there will be some shading while, but...
Oh, no, because the sun's in the south.
Anything else? So are we making a motion to reject the final site plan due to the failure to meet section 6B8, and then requesting resubmital, and assuming that he satisfies everything, I think that we should be pretty straightforward next time, or is there...
Is that a rejection, or is it, I don't even know if it's a rejection?
Well, it's either we can approve, we can approve with conditions, or we can reject.
Or continue it, because we're out of time.
I've got to do one other thing. So do we, are we going to continue this, our normal meeting? Is that what you're...
I don't know. I'm not sure what I'm asking.
That's, I don't know what you're asking.
Yeah. Your respective, I mean, it's a kind of procedural, whether we...
It is.
I mean, one way or the other, he needs to come back and show us a finalized plan.
Right.
So it really doesn't matter one way or the other. We can either reject it or just say, return with the finalized plan, and then we'll vote on it.
That's fine.
How long is it? I mean, 30 days? Next meeting?
I think, yeah.
We want a rejection.
Right, right.
We don't want a rejection.
Sure, sure.
You want a rejection?
No, no.
No.
Then all we're going to do is, at this point, we're just going to a team vote and move forward to the next meeting.
All right. Thank you for your help, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Bendoffer, if you have something, very, very quick.
One, like, one thing I'd like to clarify, I'm getting like, the... Number one, are we agreed at the eight-foot level of the fence and the...
No, six feet. The trees will grow up, but we are only, we can only do a six foot as our, as our...
Does that mean, if that was the specific requirement, says a minimum of six feet?
And if he meets that, he, it's approved.
Why would you give the eight foot to the business, not to the guy who's living there?
Because we have a BZA condition that specifies that there is, along with sufficient mounding, a minimum of six feet. So given that they can't do mounding on that side, and there was a specific condition that was written in for that section, we have a little bit more leeway there. So that's why.
Okay, great. And the point is, all right, so the tree goes one and a half feet per year. I'm 72 years old, so what am I gonna be doing for the first three years? I'm gonna be looking over and at what I don't want to see, and on my privacy, really. That's the point I want to make. And then this other thing was neglected, and I think it's very germane to the west side. The, it's the 66-foot wide, whatever you want to call it, the baseline and the trees are up.
He's looking at a different place than we're talking about.
Right at that border of, I guess, six, five, five and four, and they specifically say wetlands. Now, I've talked with Joe Luczek at the EPA, and he's given me the conditional permit, and he says that it's gonna be a... And he says that it's going to be, it's going to be at, they're going to allow 511 to fill that up with dirt.
And, and that's something, we're not the subject matter experts on that. The EPA is the subject matter experts and they're the ones who will make that determination. We can't make that.
If that thing is a foot deep, I mean, I hear you talk about a lot of dirt. And if they're going to put a roadway there, that's, you know, you don't want, you want your, that's up to them. But if that, if that water, I mean, it's a pool, it's a pool water. And, and I, and they, they even admitted it. And my understanding was, well, this wetland, you can't build on. So they said, well, okay, we're going to cut you regularly, let you fill it in with dirt.
I think, it depends, it depends on how much, how much wetlands there is on the entire property. Some of it can't be filled in.
And Mr. Wilson already spoke to this, and I think a lot of those were determined to be what's called an isolated wetland. Correct. And an isolated wetland is a very distinct, you know, animal relative to other wetlands that continue and that the water flows through to get to the rivers. And so, but that's all governed by the EPA, so.
I know, and I spoke with him. He actually gave me the permit. Well, again, and, and again, I'm going to leave it with that, that I still would ask for the eight feet. Before you, before you, if you're going to table it, please talk it over and give me that actually. It's going to give me privacy that I'm going to, I'm going to have to wait three years for it to get the trees updated. I want it now, I want it now. Seventy-two.
We are talking about down here, right?
That's what he's talking about here. Can you mound it? Can you keep that mound that you have here and put the six foot trees in the fence on top of that mound? You, you're showing a mound here.
Let me go back and speak with the engineers then. I'll go to that one here.
See if you can do even a two foot, just to get us up to eight. That'd be nice, if we can do something like that. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bendoff. I do need to make another motion unfortunately, because I have to get this other one thing in before we adjourn for the evening and then we'll table the rest of the items. So I'd like to make a motion to, sorry, I'd like to entertain a motion to extend the meeting by another 15 minutes.
Still moved.
Moved by Spellman. Seconded by Manley. All in favor. All opposed. Unanuss approval. Thank you. So this is an interesting one. I somehow lost my Zoom meeting, so I'll see if I can rejoin correctly. There is a small parcel. Where did my, where did the Zoom go? To rejoin. No, it's.
It's time to go, that's why.
The computer, right, the computer died and then.
How do you lose?
So is the case. That's it. So then I relaunched. It's already shown on the.
So this is something that we're going to be addressing after you get Medina County Planning Commission's input?
No, this is something we have to make a motion for today in order to send it to Medina Planning Commission, so it links up correctly. There is a.
Do you want to give me what's me and I can hear it?
Yes, thank you. There is a small parcel of land that's behind the school. It's zoned residential.
Yeah.
It's 100 feet in depth. And it, so it's between the school parcel and the parcel that is currently zoned. Business. And what I propose that we do is we make a motion. I want to make sure if I push on. Is we make a motion to amend that to the B2 district. And the motion, what that would mean is that then it would be, if we make that motion and approve that motion, it would be forwarded to the planning commission. So the planning commission could consider that parcel at the same time as they're considering the zoning part, the, the school parcel.
You're talking about this pink piece?
I, I'm talking about a very small section of that pink. This.
Who's the owner?
Joe.
Have you talked to him?
I have, and he's okay with it.
What's the cutoff for their agenda?
Good question. So their cutoff has already occurred, but she'll treat this as an amendment to an existing complete application. And so as a result, we'll still be able to squeeze it in on the May meeting. The primary reason for this is because then, when it gets back to us, we can make a recommendation on both the school. And the parcel that I'm referring to is actually, it's, so this parcel right here. This section is already zoned business. This little square right here is zoned residential. This square here is also zoned residential.
So one, one parcel's split.
Split, correct. And so my understanding is back in the day, they would sometimes just draw vertical lines and that's where the business would be. So they didn't take concern as to where the parcel was, where sublots were. So this is all actually one big parcel with one parcel number. But there was a subdivision, it's the Hinckley-Platt subdivision, and we'll, it will be on the motion. But that subdivision had subplots. And so this, and actually part of the school, was one subplot. This over here was another subplot. This was not part of the sublots at all. So that's why you're seeing these, these two red lines and this red line are actually lines of the sublots. The blue lines are different parcel lines. So we actually went with the county engineer to understand these maps better. And then I also spoke to tax maps on it. And so what I would propose that we do is motion to make this B2, this B2. This over here is already B2, and this is the proposed B2. When it gets through us, we can then make a recommendation to recommend approval of all of it, denial of all of it, or a portion of that. But the reason I would like to do this is because when it gets to the trustees and they make a final decision on the school plot, what I don't want to happen is that they approve of a B2 on the school. There's a B2 south of the school, and there's this tiny residential between the B2 and the B2. And then we'd have to go back and fix it. So I'd rather them see all of it at once than they can consider both parcels at once and they can make their own approval or denial of each of those parcels individually. I would assume that they'll fall together or rise together. But that's for them to make. I'm just trying to keep them tied on a process so that we don't have to go back and fix something later should the B2, should the school parcel be approved. Are there any questions on that?
We're not recommending one way or the other. We're just saying, hey, we got this little situation back here. Since you're already looking at this, look at that, and we'll look at it collectively.
Correct. And we will ultimately make a recommendation because we will do that at probably our next meeting at the same time we do the school. But the motion tonight is not a recommendation. It's an emotion to amend for purposes of starting it down the process so that it's reviewed at the same time as the school.
My concern is that it signals a tacit approval to the Medina County Planning Commission. And it's been made very clear, we can't oppose Medina County Planning Commission, even if we don't agree with them.
Say, say that again, Matt.
If we add, if we as a zoning commission say, hey, let's add these in as a B2 also, that's a tacit approval to the Medina County Planning Commission, saying, you know what? The zoning commission actually wants to extend what they're already trying to extend. So we're just going to go ahead and say yes. And it's been very clear at the township level, we can't oppose the Medina County Planning Commission.
Well, that's not true.
No, it was, it was made very clear last year.
There's too much.
The Medina County Planning Commission's always been an advisory board.
In fact, last year we opposed, and what happened? It was changed, but it was not.
It was not removed.
What our recommendation was, was completely steamrolled.
It was reduced.
One piece was reduced, other pieces were completely removed.
Correct.
Which allowed a lot of, a lot of the problems we're dealing with, literally tonight, to continue to go forward.
Well, if it's an issue, can you just add a footnote that this is being done?
Simultaneously, we tried to deal with things proactively in the last few months. And there was a lot of opposition to that, saying, no, we, we don't need to be leaning into problems. Let's just deal with them as they come up. So right now, we're being proactive with a potential problem.
Yeah. I'm, I'm trying to avoid us having to do another public hearing in June, another planning commission meeting.
We don't know where it's going to go, though. We don't know.
Well, that's why.
The other is going to be.
We don't know where this would go either, but at least then the township trustees are considering.
If we're initiating it, it makes it look like we wanted something done to it. So I would not, I would prefer that zoning not initiate it.
Yes.
I, respectfully, I disagree. I mean, what we're, what we're asking for is you're already considering that thing up there. While you're at it, might as well consider this. It's not us saying, hey, we want to do this.
But that's how it comes across.
I've already spoken to, to the planning services on this to ask about the possibility of us incorporating this. Because as I said, we're after the submission date and what can we do about this? So they're aware of why we're doing it. They're aware of, you know, they're, they're fully aware of this. And then I will be attending the May meeting and I will be sure to note that we're, this is not an endorsement or a recommendation of any sort. We have not made that vote yet. This is merely a procedural process to enable these to be considered simultaneously so that we're not revisiting this potentially in two months.
Can you do that without the property owners submitting application?
Yeah, so the 519 says that there's three ways that a, a tax law amendment can be made, and one of them is through the zoning commission. I also already confirmed that if we vote a recommendation of no on this parcel, would it still go to the township trustees for consideration either way? So that we're not just doing this. And then if we vote no, it's killing it. And the answer to that is also no, regardless of, once we start this, this, and, you know, once we start this, it'll go all the way to the township trustees for consideration. So we can still make a recommendation either way on it at our next meeting.
So ultimately, why would we not want that to still be residential?
Because if the school gets moved to business, we have business north, we have business south. And now we have a 100-foot strip, which is all that that is of residential. We would not want a 100-foot strip. It's almost unbuildable.
It would be unbuildable, but if it's part of, if it, it is currently part of a different parcel or it's, it's owned by the same gentleman who owns the B2 space. And it doesn't put any sort of limitation on what it can do with that land, except that 100-foot strip, which is already going to have setbacks anyways.
So you're saying, your argument, it's already unbuildable. It's a non-conforming chunk back there. It doesn't matter whether it's B1, R1, R2, some other.
Well, it's, it's not that it doesn't matter. I think it does matter. I think it needs to be R1.
Why would it need to be R1 if above it is B2 and below it is B2? I'm not sure I follow why you, why that has to be R1 if everything around it is B.
And.
Well, that's.
That's, that's why I want it to remain R1. Because if it remains R1, it is not the zoning commission actively trying to build out the B2 district. If we are actively trying to build out the B2 district, the Medina County Planning Commission is going to look at it and say, well, the zoning commission is already trying to expand it. We're just going to go ahead and say, yes, this should be approved as, as B2. And hey, it's great for the township because they get more money out of the, when, when there's a, when there's a business there or, or there's additional influx of, of cash into downtown Hinckley. You've said previously that there is too much city representation on the Medina County Planning Commission.
I agree. I, I don't, but I don't think that this is going to have any impact on that.
So then why are we doing it?
Because, again, I don't want to reduce this in June and July. I want the township trustees to be able to consider both of these at the same time so that we're not having to have another round of public hearings. Because if that goes, if the top goes B2, I think we absolutely need to make a motion to change that to B2. Because there's no reason to have a small residential strip. It's, it's a.
Isn't that up to the property owner to do that?
No, we have the right to do that as well. That's one of the three ways that.
We have the right to, but we don't have the need to. There is, there, there's no requirement.
deficiencies in the map. I mean, we should make things so that it's coherent.
And in, there's, there's a good possibility that that isn't going to be a deficiency.
If the township trustees vote no, and I agree. And if they do, I would strongly suggest that they also vote no on this other small strip. But what I want is them to be able to consider these simultaneously so that we don't have to do anything later. Again, our recommendation for all of this can be no. It's just to move it through the process so that it's, we're not coming back and fixing.
Is the map deficient?
If the.
You stated the map is deficient.
Is it deficient? I said, if the school goes B2, I do think it's deficient. I benefit that small strip of land. If it doesn't, then I would think that the township trustees would also vote no on this small strip of land, and it would remain just as is. And why would it be detrimental to have another public hearing over that? Because that's an expense on the township's part. It's an expense and it's a time resource commitment.
You're both making very good arguments here. Marcus, like, I kind of agree with you. At the end of the day, it's just here, let's do it all as one and, and let it sinker or swim all as one. And that, that is an efficient thing. There is, from your perspective, Mr. Marzullo, I'm just curious how things above it's going to play out and.
We're, we're going to be here. We will be here in June and July anyways.
Right, but we have to have a public hearing. We might have to have two public hearings. The township trustees have to have a public hearing. So we've got three public hearings, public notice for each of those public hearings. And then we have the time and resource commitment to that, that we're not able to look at amending the B2. I'd like to look at conservation districts and front yard setback. That's a consideration. I'd like to look at multi-dwelling units and, and whether those should still be, whether we should correct that potential deficiency that you raised last year of chapter four versus, you know, deep attached dwellings. And so all of that is being pushed aside because these are going to take the precedent. And I think that that, you know, we're an extremely capable board and I hate to see our resources be utilized on something so simple that can be, that the township can then just fix at one time. They can either reject them both or approve them both, and then we move forward and we're finished with this proposal on this whole section. And then we get to move on to what I think are far more pressing matters in terms of the things I just listed and revisiting this whole thing for a second time.
And I think that if the B, if the school does go B2, the public hearing for that 100-foot strip of land would be about five minutes long. And we would be able to move on very quickly. But again, I think it looks very, first off, take Medina County planning out of it entirely. How does this look to the township? When the zoning commission is actively trying to expand the B2 district? Whether we're actively trying to or not, that is the optics of it.
Right. It does. That's, that's perception. Perception.
Mr. Manley, what are your thoughts?
Well, I actually agree with Matt. On the other hand.
On the other hand, we were appointed to make certain decisions. And you've obviously done a lot of research on this. Your argument is persuasive. And again, that's, that's why we're here, to make these decisions. No matter which way you go, somebody's going to be unhappy. And I think we all recognize that at the end of the day, we probably are saving the township a few dollars. Maybe we get a pay increase even, for all this wonderful stuff. But I, I think I tend to go with, let's, let's move for the change. And we are just an advisory board to the trustees, as don't we? Can't forget that.
Correct. And even if we approve of this motion, this, again, this is not a recommendation or endorsement on either, any of these parcels that we're going to speak about. That will come at the next meeting. This is just to sync them up for purposes of efficiency of the process, so that the township trustees get to look at multiple parcels, as opposed to one parcel, and then have to go back and look at another one.
So our, our primary role is to make sure that the resolution lines up with a comprehensive plan, and with what is best for the township.
And that's exactly what we do at the next meeting.
Yep.
Regardless.
And what's really important, like, right now, reading the room, and this isn't about bowing to, to public perception, but everyone in the audience is saying, don't do this. Every single one.
Yeah, I just don't think this is the time for this, Marcus. I, I just don't, this is not, there's a lot of anger still with the senior complex. And then now with the school, I mean, the emails that have been forwarded, I didn't see one email from any resident for it at all. And I, this is not the time for it. It's just not the time for it. I just think it sends up, it's a perception to the community, not just the folks in the room here, but it, it sends a message to the community. Zoning's trying to get B1 expanded. Not, not what we, not what we want. We do a lot of good work, and I think our good work, you know, should resonate, rather than taking on this project.
I think we are the ones the trustees serve, right?
Correct, but the trustees are the ones who will vote one way or the other, correct?
Yes.
So that's what I'm trying to do here, is get it to, into the hands of the trustees to make a decision.
No, honestly, I mean, that's, this is our role, is to look at things like this and say, have the conversation, and beat it up from every different angle, and say, is this the right thing to do?
I agree, that's the forum. I just don't agree it's the right time.
The perception of it is very mistaken. If you look at it from the perspective of, oh, the, the zoning commission is passing this on to, to change it to B2, the reality of it is, that's not what you're saying. We're, we, if we were to do that, you were saying, we're already considering this, consider this other thing, to say, to, to create an efficiency.
Right.
Everything that you explained assumes, just assume for one moment, that that thing above it turns into B2, and then that becomes our problem.
Right.
And it's a lot of assumption going into that. I don't know how anybody's going to vote on it.
And that's why I, we just, I, I think we throw it out, and we vote on it next time as a recommendation, one way or the other, and we move it forward. You know, to Ms. Cruz's point, I don't know that the sentiment's going to change in June or July. If that goes B2 above, and then we propose another B2, that's not going to go over any better. It's not going to, the public's not going to say, oh, this is a great position now. You just expanded it once, now you're expanding it again. It, it's not, the, the public perception's not going to change. We're just going to have the same comments. We're going to get the same frustration.
Well, I think, I, I agree with you, but I think then we can have that public hearing that we're going to combine all the amendments that we were going to make to the text, and, and do it all at one, clean it up then, rather than push it in now. So I know, I know we talked about having a hearing for the solar amendments and for other things, so we're going to have a, a public hearing no matter what, in the future. So we could just pull it all together. I just think it's, it's not, I, the perception is bad. It's really bad.
And I guess, if that remains residential and above it goes business.
And below it already is business.
Correct, yeah. Potentially, we want to change it in the future, fine. Why does it need to be right away?
Because I think we have a duty to clean up the, clean up things. I, I, I think that if we see a deficiency like this, and we have been a player in causing that deficiency, because, you know, we are involved in the process of making this map, why would we create a map and then allow that map to be stagnant with something so glaring as, why do you have this small sliver of residential between these two business districts?
Because we don't have a business right now. We have a residential.
But Matt's talking about why would we even revisit it in June or July? And that's why we revisit it in June or July.
Well, but to Matt's point, it's residential right now. Until it changes, it's still residential. And so we shouldn't even think about it. I mean, I, I understand your efficiency.
And why wouldn't we trade, change the other parcel next to it to business? Because it's got business all the left of it, all to the west of it.
Because that's not sandwiched between businesses. That's a giant residence on the, on the.
On the, on the eastern side.
That's not the same as this. This is a completely sandwiched property. Could be. Could be, and that's what, that's what I'm preparing for, is, let's do this because there's that potential. So let's get in front of the trustees, so they can vote on all of that.
Have, have we, I, let's just pretend for a second, that guy up there becomes B2, and we do nothing with that down there. We put an undue burden on that property now, because it's effectively landlocked due to zoning.
Potentially.
That you can't do anything with it. And even, by the way, even if it was changed to B2, the setbacks alone, and I don't, I don't know what the, the height of that thing is, but I don't think there's anything you could do with it unless you combine.
That's a hundred feet. There's nothing that you're ever doing with that, unless you combine it with the J's.
Hundred feet, top to bottom?
Bottom.
So there's nothing you can do with it?
You got to combine it.
You've got to combine it.
Whether it's, whether it's R1 or B2.
Correct. Correct, it's got to be combined.
Why would we change it if you can't do anything with it, if it's R1 or B2?
Because you couldn't, if that goes B2 and this is B2, there's no way that you could combine that with anything in a residential that would make it usable. But you could combine it with a business to make it usable. And that's why, if that goes B2 above it, and if it's B2 below it, the only thing that you can do to render that property usable is make it a B2.
I think we're at our 30 minutes. 10 on 1.
So I'll at least entertain a motion, and if someone wants to approve, second, we'll go through a vote. If we reject it, so be it. The motion would be motion to amend the zoning map to change the portion of sub lot 4, which is this sub lot, in the Hinckley Center Platte Township Lot 56 subdivision contained within parcel 016-03D-01-005, that is presently zoned R1, and the portion of sub lot 5, this is sub lot 5, and the Hinckley Center Platte Township Lot 56 subdivision contained within parcel 016-03D-01-005, from R1 to B2, and to forward the map amendment to the Medina County Planning Commission. So anyone want to make that motion? Good. Then that concludes that. In terms of old business, we talked about the map amendment from the, oh, we got to do, we're going to have to do another motion if anyone wants to present comments for the zoning commission.
Extension.
Extension.
I believe to extend 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Second it, this is the last one.
I can feel my tires are getting slashed.
You said that last time.
Okay, motion to extend 15 minutes, Spellman, second by Crew, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nothing? All right.
My poor puppy.
We had a map amendment change from R1 to, there's a, there is a proposed map amendment change from R1 to B2 for 1586 Center Road. We're awaiting comments from the Medina County Planning Commission. I will be, we will not be submitting written comments, however, I will be attending the planning commission. If there are any comments that this commission would like me to make, I would like to do so.
I don't, I, I, I am against it. I'm against changing it to B1. I don't see the value in it to Hinckley Township to it, to do it, the change. I don't, I disagree that in the comprehensive plan, it, it speaks to it. I believe the comprehensive plan speaks to having this rural, small-town community downtown center, not to expand the downtown center.
So I guess the only comment out of that that we would provide to the commission would be the desire that the comprehensive plan provides for a small town center and not this expansion, is your belief, Mark?
Right. Doesn't, not in that direction. Correct.
Any other comments?
I believe we already have empty buildings and, or empty business spaces and townships.
And the other is, there's no plan for it. I mean, there was no plan as to what it was going to be if they changed it to a business.
The rationale for it is, is lacking.
It's bad.
We want more money.
My comment is, as I said a long time ago, the money is, is an issue. But secondly, we've had too many experiences where, where people have made arrangements with the seller to come before us, and if they could make certain changes, either through zoning or BZA or vote, then they would buy the land. And it's happened too many times, in fact, to the wanting people themselves trust itself. But there's just no need for this at this time.
So the, just that one is no current plan?
There's just no need at this time.
Anything else? Good. We will table short-term rentals, obviously, until the next meeting. I really would like to conclude, because as I said, I think this is a very capable board, and I think that there are a lot of subject items that are far more pressing and probably, you know, more concerned for the public. All right, at this time, I will do, I have no other chairman's report. The next zoning commission regular meeting will be.
Mr. Pearl has a comment.
Public comments are at the very end of the meeting. The next zoning commission regular meeting is May 5th at 7:00 PM.
6:30.
The public hearing will be at 6:30 before that. Board member reports. Crew, anything?
No.
Happy to be here. Good. Manley?
I, no, I'm at this time. No, it's.
I, I have one thing.
We are done.
Well, Ma, Ma was going to present on, and I, I can take my two minutes really quick. Was going to, Dave, you were going to present on the steering committee.
I just listened to that as an option.
I attended the steering committee. I was there in the audience. And I'm, I just want to say that I was disappointed in the survey questions that are going to be used.
That's my whole talk, which I decided not to get into.
Well, I'm going to take my five minutes.
It was terrible.
I'm disappointed. If, if we all recall, I am the zoning person who said that the comprehensive plan can be amended, right? The questions led, I think, and the, the person or the reader to say whether or not we are going to redo or come up with a different comprehensive plan, not an amendment. And, and it doesn't help us, I don't think the questions help us move further. So I was very disappointed.
I have, I'm pretty good, if I said they're going to throw almost all of those out.
Okay.
And they'll consider that the April meeting, my understanding is the April meeting, they will decide, the, the committee will decide on the final questions and submit those, so they're having a work session for the purpose of identifying what sorts of questions they want.
Right, and I just think the steering committee, and I'm sure the ones that are here know, but that helps us, right? The, the questions that are going to be asked, and how the community responds to them, is going to help zoning. However, those questions were not, that, that were being used do not help us.
Nothing else, correct? Go ahead.
One thing, uh, three things. That's probably four by the time I'm done. You're doing a great job as a chair. Keep throwing the ideas out. I saw a moment where you looked defeated a few minutes ago.
I always look. Move on.
I, I agree with Mr. Crew on this one. If, for whatever reason, that thing does go B2, there will be ample opportunity down the road where we may not have to break it out separately to do some other cleanup. There's going to be a lot of other things here, hopefully by the end of the.
I don't feel like I would have been doing my due diligence if I didn't point that out and have that discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's our role. And then my last comment is, there was a lot of good feedback from the public today in the public hearing. I think they, it serves its purpose, and I, I think we'll hear more probably next month as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pearl. All right, if there are any comments from the floor, Mr. Pearl, I think I saw your hand.
Is there anybody to go back to that screen?
Yes.
There's a, please, there's, Joe's property is a zigzag, it can send in gray or light blue.
Right there.
That's all one parcel.
Correct.
Now, how about this square that's 100 by 380?
I didn't want you to ask about that one.
Well, that's what I came.
It's unowned.
It's unowned.
Correct.
How interesting.
There's, so I, that's why, so we met the county engineer, because I wanted to understand that parcel, in part because there, there's, if you look, there's a tiny section that actually touches the school district. Also, if you look on Zillow, it appears that all of this and this is a continuation of the same parcel. It's not, if you click on that, I know, but I know the public might look at Zillow and say, that's, that's part of that parcel. So that parcel is, there's a star next to it, and it says that there's no known owner for this parcel. We contacted, went to Medina County Engineer, they looked at that, said strange. We contacted tax maps, they said that sometimes happens. Normally, it happens if multiple, there are surveys done, and one of the surveys was wrong, and so when they pinned it, they pinned it incorrectly. He's like, that's one of, that's, that's the largest parcel he's aware of that hasn't, that's unowned, but that happens sometimes. Basically, what would happen is an owner surrounding it, presumably through adverse possession, would have to take ownership of that parcel.
Thank you for the explanation.
No problem. But I'm glad I researched it, just so I had your answer.
Just really quick, a reminder, and this is something I have to tell Marcus, if you guys feel that your meetings are running long, you're willing to do a second meeting or a work session or something like that, I'm sure you've been accommodating that, you can work it out as a board. The second thing is, if you feel that you need a consultant or anything, please feel free to have a discussion on that as well, and let me know. Marcus, how big is that parcel?
A little under an acre.
Okay, two comments. First of all, I've been listening to this for half an hour, and there is an inherent problem with any language. You've been talking about perception. I don't know how we're going to ever solve this. And when I, when I say something, I have an intention. And the problem is that it can be taken, perceived in a different way. The question lies in the use of language, the semantics, the subjectivity. And this is what's opening the door up to these all kinds of loopholes and all that kind of stuff. My humble opinion is that before somebody makes a comment or an intention, even if you have to put a little asterisk on the bottom and say, this is what I mean by what I'm saying, so that the other people don't get, you take the perception away from, because you, you, you know, you're in a position of authority, and you're supposed to know what that, so, but you're going to have other people going to say, no, I, the fine print. And no, no offense to attorneys, but that's how they. "No, I, the fine print," and no, no offense to attorneys, but that's how they work, in my own opinion. They deliver, they use language that is, is subjective. And the other, the last question I have, and this is most important, I've been going through this all this time. I was under the impression, I, I know this came from Anna, how all of these things are like, it started with either zoning Dan Willhite and Highland Engineers Office, EPA and all these other places. I'm talking about our own community. We, as the residents, elect trustees, and they are supposed to act, we recently elected, because they're supposed to advocate for us. But then when we get into something like this, it, it seems, and this is one, the question is, are you, and we'll take pride in one or even, even this, are you the ones who are going to make the final, like, maybe come back next week and, or next month, and you say, "It's a done deal." But then I hear you talking that it's going to go back to the trustees. And I think humbly it should because, again, they represent us. The trustees elect the board of zoning appeals, they elect you. And, and during the procedure, they can put their inputs in, but you're taking, in my opinion, you're taking away the power that we've given them. So, you know, no offense to anybody, but, you know, we should have a say-so through somebody, and these public meetings help. But again, we should, we should know where we stand. Like, I mean, that's why I'm here. I thought this was the end. I mean, and I'm glad you tabled it or whatever. But, all right, so whatever happens next in May, is it going to go to, who's going to make the final decision? The final site plan and everything is going to say, "This is it, and we're done." It's not going to go back to Medina County, it's not going to go back to EPA, it's not going to go back to-
So the-
I really need to know this because I've been going back and forth and my head is spinning.
Sure. You ask a lot of things. This commission will make a final approval or disapproval, whatever we're going to do on the final site plan. That really will conclude it. The zoning inspector will then have the option to inspect it all the way through to make sure that it's complete. Medina County and the trust, I think the trustees are involved, and the, at least the township is involved, in the final deed that happens. But they're not going to have a public hearing. This really is the end of the meeting session with respect to this. So when we do our vote, that's really it with respect to the public input portion of that. When I said it goes back to the township trustees, that was the map amendment. As, as far as us, we are an appointed board, and we're actually an independent board. And so our terms are intentionally longer than the trustees' terms because the idea is that you want this board to move much more slowly in terms of the types of regulations that happen than an elected official. An elected official might come in and be able to change everything that they're doing within a year or two. But this board is staggered positions over a five-year span so that you're not seeing those quick transitions based upon the sentiment of the public. We're here to represent the public, but we are not going to just be, you know, to have, have, our, what we do is not dictated by the trustees. We are an independent body relative to the trustees. To represent the community, absolutely, absolutely we are. But we're not the same as the trustees in that regard. But we are intended to represent the will of the community, absolutely. So the final thing that I'll say is that I encourage any of you, because we will likely have a, a motion for this recommendation for the school at the next meeting. If there are any questions or you want to know what kind of factors to consider legally, feel free to reach out to Brian Richter from the Medina County Prosecutor. There's, there, there are legal assistants on this to understand what sort of grounds you would have to approve or to reject. He's willing to always take calls. His number's been listed on all the emails that you have. If any of you don't have Brian Richter's number and you want it, just shoot us an email, shoot Suzanne an email. Someone will get you Brian Richter's contact number.
Should we reach out to him individually or route that through?
No, I want you to reach out to him individually because he can't provide, if, he could provide a recommendation, written recommendation to us, but we cannot have a conference call, for instance, with him. So I want each one of you, if you have any questions, to feel free to reach out to him and have a conversation. Good. I'll entertain a motion to, thank you. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Hang on, let me finish this. 10:18.
10:18. I hope my house is-
Motion by Spellman, second by-
Oh, that was Manly.
Marzullo.